Welcome to the Lompoke City Council Meeting, and could we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Martner.
President.
Councilmember Costa.
Present.
Councilmember Lingle.
Here.
Mayor Protem Starbuck.
Present.
Mayor John Lynn.
Here. Oral communication is your opportunity to talk to us on any subject. Since there's no one here, I don't think everybody wants to talk to us. And we will be having a closed session. The location is changed to the employee break room, and we will have two items: a conference with legal counsel on anticipated litigation, initiation of litigation pursuant to subdivision C of Section 54956.91 matter, and another round of trying to get our questions together for the city administrator's evaluation. And that's all. We'll see you at seven. Good evening. Welcome back to the Lompoke City Council Meeting, or in this case, welcome to all of you. And we have a report from closed session. We have no report. And we will need to have roll call again, please.
Councilmember Martner.
Present.
Councilmember Costa.
Present.
Councilmember Lingle.
Here.
Mayor Protem Starbuck.
Present.
Mayor John Lynn.
Here. And let the record reflect that Councilmember Martner joined us prior to the beginning of the closed session. And now, Elaine, where are you? There she is. She was hiding in the back. If you'd all please rise and for the invocation and the pledge of allegiance.
Almighty God, we come before you tonight asking for wisdom for our elected officials. May you guide them tonight in all they decide and give them insight into both the short and long-term aspects of these decisions. If they are weary or not feeling up to par, please touch them even now and give them extra energy and stamina. Let not the responsibility of their positions be a burden, but rather seen as a gift of trust from their constituents who have elected them. We also ask you, Almighty God, to let all who speak here tonight express their ideas and opinions with clarity and accuracy. Let each person be able to communicate their ideas and come away with the feeling that they have at least been heard, even if what they want cannot be accomplished at this time. Let there be a spirit of what is good for the community rather than just what is good for me. We ask all these things remembering the following excerpt from the second chapter of the Book of Proverbs: "For the Lord gives wisdom; from his mouth come knowledge and understanding. He stores of sound wisdom for the upright; he is a shield to those who walk in integrity, guarding the paths of justice, and he preserves the way of his godly ones. Then you will discern righteousness and justice and equity in every good course; for wisdom will enter your heart, and knowledge will be pleasant to your soul."
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
And last week, I made a presentation to Dwayne Solomon, our hometown Olympic hero, at a barbecue in his honor. The event was well-attended. Everybody had a great time, and I just want to thank everybody in town that worked so hard to put the event on for him. So it was great. And now we have a couple other proclamations. And this is a proclamation at the request of a national organization who was not able to be with us here this evening. And this is a dual declaration of October as Breast Cancer Awareness Month and November as End Domestic Violence Month. Whereas October and November are National Breast Cancer Awareness and End Domestic Violence Months, and whereas in the United States, one out of eight women will be diagnosed with breast cancer, and an estimated 211,240 new cases of female breast cancer were diagnosed in 2009, and that mammography is recognized as the most effective method of detecting breast changes that may be cancer long before physical symptoms can be seen or felt. And whereas domestic violence is a serious and violent social problem that exists in all income segments, all economic segments of our society, in all cultures, and in all countries of the world, and knowing that every nine seconds, a woman is a victim of physical assault in the United States totaling more than 1.3 million per year, and whereas the Seroptimists International are in a position worldwide to educate everyone, especially women, but they have the right to feel safe and live free from violence at home, in the workplace, and that they have access to breast cancer prevention information and services. Whereas the Seroptimist Workplace Campaign to End Domestic Violence and Breast Cancer Awareness are ongoing Seroptimist efforts to promote awareness, advocacy, and action. And whereas Seroptimists is an international volunteer organization for business and professional women who work to improve the lives of women and girls in local communities throughout the world, and has launched a region-wide campaign called Color Me Pink for Breast Cancer and Color Me Purple for Domestic Violence. Now therefore, I, John H. Lynn, Mayor of the City of Lompoke, do hereby proclaim the months of October 2012 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month and November 2012 as End Domestic Violence Month, with special recognition to the Seroptimists of the Comune Real Region for their various contributions to the many communities for advocacy, action, and awareness. It's all of our responsibility. Domestic violence is everyone's responsibility. Don't be a secret agent. If you know something is wrong, be involved. Lives are at stake. We were sad to have a life lost earlier this year. Sorry, these are tough. Proclamation of Bullying Awareness Month. Whereas the City of Lompoke has an interest in promoting the social and economic well-being of its employees and citizens, safeguarding our schools and community, and fostering an environment that holds promise and security, and whereas the well-being depends upon the existence of healthy and productive employees working in safe and abuse-free and in abuse-free environment and safe physical and emotional environments in which our children can learn and thrive. And whereas surveys and studies have documented that stress-related health consequences for individuals caused by exposure to abusive environments, and each day, an estimated 160,000 children refuse to go to school because they dread the physical and verbal aggression of their peers and the loneliness that comes from being excluded and made the target of rumors, cyberbullying, and other acts. Many more students attend school in a chronic state of anxiety. And whereas abusive work environments can create costly consequences for employers, including reduced productivity, absenteeism, turnover, employee health-related expenses, and if left unchecked, costly litigation. It is important that we acknowledge and heighten awareness about the serious issues and the negative effects of bullying, including the long-term damage it can cause to our youth as well as the risks of teenage suicide. Whereas protection from abuse, work, educational environments should apply to every citizen regardless of race, color, gender, national origin, or disability. Now therefore, I, John H. Lynn, Mayor of the City of Lompoke, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2012 as Bullying Awareness Month. And I urge everyone to stop. Thank you. Now into something a little lighter and a lot more fun. The City of Lompoke Employee Suggestion Awards Program Presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, and members of the community. My name is Jeanette Bartels. I'm the Senior HR Analyst for the City of Lompoke's Human Resources Department. I am here to give a presentation on the Employee Suggestions Awards Program. This program is designed to give recognition to city employees for original constructive suggestions for reducing costs, improving city operations, and providing better service to the community. Recognition is in the form of both monetary and non-monetary rewards. The suggestion committee can recommend four types of rewards: certificate of commendation and a monetary award of 10% of the estimated first year's tangible net savings, or increase of revenue not to exceed $1,000 reward. The second is a certificate of merit for non-intangible benefit accrued to the city. The third is certificate of merit in $100 specific but non-intangible cost savings such as a significant reduction in work hours. And finally, a certificate of participation provided to recognize employees for their time and effort for making suggestions, even though it may not be feasible to implement or the concepts have previously been proposed. For this calendar year, from January 2012 to September 2012, Human Resources Department received three suggestions. Of those suggestions, there are two which will receive recognition in the form of certificate of participation at the division or department-level meeting in the near future. Those participants were Juan Stevens and Gary Cox. The last suggestion will receive a certificate of commendation tonight with a cash award at this meeting. At this time, I'd like to bring in the Division Superintendent Tim Smith, the Supervisor of the Employee, Robert Archer, and the Employee Louise Lopez to come to the podium for the presentation of their certificate. Mr. Lopez gave a suggestion, and it has been implemented, for a bypass of the tertiary system out at the wastewater treatment plant, which helps them clean their tanks. This suggestion saved the city over $100,000. So as a result, he's going to get a $1,000 cash award tonight. And I'm going to have Tim give the presentation to Mr. Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, and fellow citizens. I'm Tim Smith. I'm the wastewater superintendent for the City of Lompoke. I'm very, very pleased this evening that we have such a positive thing to recognize on the city's behalf. We had a situation where we had just installed the tertiary treatment system at our plant. As we began working with it, we realized that there was no way to bypass this system in the event we needed to do maintenance on that system that was long-term, or clean the tanks that were upstream of the system without causing interference downstream. So this was something that we put into our capital budget program about two years ago, preparing for the current budget. And we estimated that it would cost some $110,000 or so to do this particular project. We had envisioned this, you know, we have a lot of pipes and pumps and tanks around our plant. And we had envisioned a fairly simple system that would have worked involving going from the pumps to through the berm that protects our plant from 100-year flood into the emergency holding basin. Simple enough, would have worked, but a little expensive going through the berm. What Mr. Lopez suggested, he went to his supervisor, our operation supervisor, Robert Archer, and said, you know, if we just connect these two pipes to these two pipes and put in a valve here and a valve there, and we turn those valves, we can basically bypass the system. And Robert said, yeah, you know, you're right. We could, I think we could do that. So Robert came to me, and he said, you know, Tim, Louise has this idea that, you know, why don't we try this? And I looked at it, and I said, you know, that is a good idea. And as a superintendent, it's my job to say, yeah, let's do it. Let's go ahead and build it. So we went ahead and put it in, and it does everything that the original conception for the project would have done, and it works extremely well. We've used it frequently since it's been installed. And again, the cost was about 10% of what we had originally anticipated, resulting in a savings of over $100,000 to the city. So we have the certificate of commendation for Louise Lopez, wastewater treatment operator two. Says this certificate and cash award of $1,000 has been awarded in recognition of his suggestion of a bypass to the tertiary treatment system to clean tanks, which resulted in a budgetary savings of over $100,000, and is signed by Mayor Lynn. Louise?
And that's all we have. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Lynn. I could hug you right now. This is so, this is so amazing, because this is something we've talked about in the past. You know, having some kind of incentive for employees such as yourself, Louise. Thank you so much for taking the initiative to do that. You have no idea, we value it. I would ask that you tell, you spread the word that this, people can make suggestions, and that there are these small cash awards, as small as they are, they mean something. And noncash awards, too. Everybody likes to get that recognition. So, you know, please spread that word throughout the employees in City Hall. We'd appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Dirk.
Mr. Lopez, you can come up and get a hug, but I wanted to go ahead and say thank you for thinking. You know, $100,000 savings is a huge amount of money, and coming forward with it, good use of your brain. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. And if you have some more suggestions, you know, turn them in right away. We could save some more money sooner. Councilmember Martner.
Could you come to my house? I'm only joking.
Mr. Mayor and council, I just want to commend, take this opportunity to commend Ms. Bartels and Human Resources Manager Beth Lam Overby for reinstating this valuable program to encourage initiative, innovative thinking, and awarding our employees like Mr. Louise, Louise, Louise Lopez. Excuse me, I'm sorry. Louise.
Councilmember Costa.
Thank you, Mayor Lynn. I also wanted to recognize, and I think it's very important, the supervisors of Mr. Lopez, who allowed him to present this idea, and we're welcoming to that and worked with him. So again, you know, supervisors as well, please spread that word to other supervisory staff within the city. We'd appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay. And next, we have the presentation from Andrew Scanlon on our Airport Layout Plan.
I'm not Andrew yet, but.
We'll share.
This airport layout plan, or master plan update, was funded primarily by the Federal Aviation Administration, completed roughly March of last year. And we are, you know, proud to have Andrew here tonight to present this presentation to the council. Andrew.
Well, thank you, Richard. Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, for the opportunity to present the master plan that we did prepare for the city. We were commissioned with this in 2009 is when the project started, and as Richard mentioned, we just finished it last year, receiving FAA approval for the airport layout plan. What I'd like to do tonight is to share with you an overview of the master plan, share with you the approach that we undertook, discuss the review of the project, also discuss the concepts that were brought forward, the recommendations brought forward. We, as part of this project, had a technical advisory committee involved, and wanted to discuss the comments that they had throughout, they're actively engaged, present to you the airport layout plan that was approved, review the cost and funding of the recommended development, briefly touch upon the environmental overview, and review the next steps that are So the purpose of a master plan is outlined in the FAA AIP handbook. An airport master plan represents the sponsor-approved actions to be accomplished for the phase development of an airport, of the airport. Basically, it's your roadmap or your blueprint of how you would like to develop the airport over the next 20 years. So as demand occurs, it gives you an idea of how to develop the airport. The approach for this type of project is a sequential step process. The first item of business is to go through and document the existing facilities, inventory what's out there. After that, we go through and prepare a forecast of aviation demand. This is based aircraft, aircraft that are stationed at the airport, also operations, takeoffs, and landings of aircraft. Once we have that, then we can determine what the needs are for the facility, additional hangar space, and so forth. Comparing the needs of the facility with what's there, we can then define what's required to meet those needs. And those are documented through a series of concepts, which are then screened and advanced forward, an environmental review done on them, and then finally, a recommended concept brought forward and documented in the final master plan document, which you have. Throughout this process, as I mentioned, we have a technical advisory committee. We met with them three key points, one at the beginning, to get an understanding of their concerns. Members of the committee included the airport commission, the FAA, SB CAG, and airport users. So it was a well-represented committee. We also, during the process, presented to the airport advisory board, and those are public meetings, along with having a public open house here in these, in this building here. Once the facility needs were defined, we published an interim report, which has been superseded by the master plan document that you now have. To share with the council briefly, some of the facilities that are out there, and these are documented in the master plan. There's one runway. It's about 4,600 feet long, 100 feet wide. The east end of the runway, runway 25, has a displaced landing point, the displaced threshold. The runway has lights for nighttime operations. There are parallel taxiways north and south of the runway. There are non-precision instrument approaches. This helps pilots be able to locate the airport in periods of fog. And there are also some visual aids as well to help the pilots as they're operating at the airport. There's a small terminal building, slash administration building. There are hangers on the airport, about 70 hangers, along with some tie-downs and aviation fueling facilities. This is just some of the same information presented in a little different format. The key takeaways here is you do have about 70 hangers at the airport, and you have about 44 tie-down locations for based aircraft facilities. You also have one fixed base operator at the time of this report. As part of the inventory, we looked at the various services that are provided not only at Lompoke, but at similar-type facilities, and documented those in the report. As you can see, most of the facilities, or services are actually provided by the city, with a couple services provided by the tenants that are there. Early on in the project, I mentioned, we spoke with the technical advisory committee. They brought forth some issues. There are about 14 issues that we were asked to look at throughout this process, and I'll just briefly touch upon those here. The first one was trying to maximize the amount of runway available for airport users. There was some use by some business jet-type aircraft coming from the East Coast. They were a little limited in their capacities on the present runway length, so we wanted to look at extending the runway. The skydive hangar was recently constructed, so wanted to incorporate that into the plans and any impacts that may have on the airport. The new round-top hangers on the north side of the airport were recently developed. Reviewing the obstacle environment to see if there can be enhancements to operations during periods of fog. Looking at the 13 acres on the south side of the airport and identifying an approach to develop that parcel. At the time, there's a little bit of through-the-fence activity, just defining what that is and what the FAA would buy off on or allow, or the potential for that on the south side of the airport. And we also were understand, under the impression or understanding that the V Street would be improved and further develop, excuse me, developed. So we looked at that as part of the recommended plan, along with the potential for some sort of a transit or admin building located there, some sort of joint facility. That was discussed throughout the plan as well. Ensuring that the airport had good protection from surrounding uses, good compatible uses around the airport, and the airport actually is very, very compatible with most of the uses northwest and east. Recognizing the public involvement throughout the process, looking at the pavement conditions, particularly the north apron was a concern to us. Also, the administration building is a little bit dated, and there are some issues and challenges with that facility. One of the points brought up by the advisory committee was jet blast and dust blowing across Highway 1 when the jets were operating. So one of the things we looked at was how to mitigate that. And also, for the users of the airport, of the Tennessee airport, providing a way for them to get from one side of the airport to the other, north to south, without having to cross the runway and potentially having a runway incursion. We developed a range of forecasts as part of this study, with a baseline forecast representing kind of a high-market average for the airport over the last 20 years, the low growth being a flat, no-growth concept. And it's important to point out that these are unconstrained forecasts, meaning that they're not constrained by any sort of physical constraints or political constraints, it's just purely what could potentially happen from a market-demand perspective. And with the high growth, we were looking at scenarios. We noticed as we reviewed historical data that there was a tendency for aircraft to be leaving Santa Barbara Airport, kind of moving northward up the coast, and we were thinking that maybe Lompoke would be one of the next stops for those airports, because San Ynez is actually getting built out, and also perhaps getting some aircraft from Santa Maria coming down this way as well. For the master plan, we selected the baseline forecast, and again, that was a high-market average. Looking at some of those concepts I just talked about with Santa Barbara, people moving out of there and also moving out of Santa Maria. The top line, 2009, that's the base year of the forecast, there were about 70 based aircraft. And you can see, most of the aircraft are smaller, single-engine-type aircraft. And going forward over the next 20 years, we really see the mix of aircraft being the same or very similar, same type of aircraft you can find out at the airport today. Terms of number of operations or takeoffs and landings, this was projected on a number of operations per base aircraft, and how we derived at them was looking at the history of the last 10 years or so. And we identified 431 operations as our existing operations per base aircraft. 550 was a high average, excuse me, an average, and then the 650 was a peak level. So again, another range of forecasts provided, and again, the baseline forecast was selected. Some of the major findings as part of this study, we determined that the airport reference code is a B2. That's the size airport this is. What that means is the type of aircraft you're seeing out there today can be accommodated if the airport is designed for that. But this also includes some of the small and medium-sized business jets which occasionally visit the airport. The runway capacity is sufficient to meet demand. What that means is there's no need to build any additional runways out here. As part of the study, we looked at the runway extension. We identified 660 feet would be ideal, but also recognized that there are some physical constraints that we cannot build that much. You can only get about 257 feet, which does help a little bit, provide some marginal improvement for those users that were expressing some concerns. And again, the adequate wind coverage, what we're saying there is we don't need any additional runways for the wind coverage. It's aligned properly. There should be some runway shoulders out there to prevent erosion, proper wash and things of that nature. It just enhances the safety of the airport. things of that nature, just enhances the safety of the airport. One significant finding, I mentioned briefly earlier about the, the landing point of runway 25 being displaced. Through our analysis, we found that that wasn't required, that the full, full runway could be used for landing. Airfield signage should be expanded. Right now, there's just a couple of signs with arrows. There should be some taxiway designations and signs indicating what those designations are. And the alphabet soup on the bottom line there, that's basically stating the various FAA design standards, your runway safety area, obstacle-free zone, runway object-free area, and runway protection zones are all in compliance with FAA design standards. So the airport is, is well, well-designed. And again, this is with the, the runway 25 landing point. We looked at the two controlling obstacles out there, the road, H Street, and also the power lines, and determined that the landing point did not need to be displaced. Some other findings, terminal facility should be extended, expanded and upgraded. There's sufficient tie-down areas out, available today. They do not to be, need to be expanded, but there should be consideration or space made available for the special events like the annual Piper Club fly-in. There is a need for some additional hangers if the baseline forecast comes to fruition. We also felt it appropriate to have another fixed base operator space designated or represented should that demand occur. Identify that the north apron, north apron pavement needs rehabilitation, and additional 1,000 square feet or so of area made available for airport maintenance and use. Further off in the, the forecast, there might be a need for an additional fuel tank. And the security at airports is ever-changing, and it's impossible for us to predict what they may be, but there may be some additional enhancements required at some point. So we have two concepts that were developed, or recommendations that were developed. One is the airside, primarily related to the airfield, the runways, taxiways. And then there's also a landside, which deals with your hangers and your, your apron areas. This is showing the, the small runway extension of 257 feet to the east end of the airport, associated taxiways to support that. We're also showing a blast fence here, and this would mitigate jet blasts and dust from going across H Street when the jets are operating at the airport. And also a, an access road for airport tenants. This would be on the, the airport side of the fence, secured side of the fence, and be for airport tenants to be able to access from one side of the, the airport to the other without crossing the runway. For the, the landside development, one of the things we did, we not only looked at the baseline forecast, we also looked at what it would take to build the high-growth forecast. And we did this for a couple of reasons. One of them was to, to help provide a flexible plant, plan for the city, so they can see what would needed, we needed not only in the next 20 years, but beyond 20 years, 30, 40, 50 years, whatever it may be. But also, this provides a tool for when you're discussing with FAA of areas that you may be able to develop for other possibly non-aviation uses, showing that we have protection not only for our master plan but beyond. So what this recommended concept is showing is a build-out essentially of the 13 acres for hangers, also cafes mentioned down there. Some other hangar development spread about the airport and development of the administration As I mentioned, the technical advisory committee was very engaged throughout the project. They provided very good feedback to us. They asked us to look at the instrument approach procedures, and we did look at those. Unfortunately, the airport sits in a valley, more or less. The mountains and hills around really limit the ability to enhance the instrument approach procedures. So unfortunately, when the fog sets in really thick, we're limited in the ability to accommodate pilots at the airport. The jet blasts affecting Highway 1 mitigation measure that we implemented for the master plan was a blast fence. Surrounding land uses, it's recognized that there's active and ongoing efforts to ensure compatible uses. City hangers require rehabilitation, there's a concern by the tenants and the advisory committee on that. Near the beginning of the project, there was a bicycle path for River Park being discussed. Since it was not an aviation development, it was not included as part of this study. And also, the, the access from the north and south side of the airport. A real, real positive thing for the city is George Miller Drive has been rehabilitated. The road was pretty, pretty poor shape when we started this study, but fortunately, it's been, been rehabilitated now. It looks really good out there, actually. There is discussion about implementing solar at the airport, whether it be on roofs of existing facilities or another development on the side. It was not included as part of this master plan, but there's still the possibility to perhaps put it on existing roofs. Accommodation of the heliport, when the skydive hangar was erected, the, the heliport that was there was displaced. We looked at potential another heliport site, and unfortunately, there's just not enough north-south separation from the runway to a heliport for a designated helicopter landing and takeoff spot. So helicopters will need to operate on the runway as they presently do, and then park in designated areas. Security requirements at Santa Maria, members of the committee commented to us that they're getting cumbersome and onerous, so that was something that we felt may drive some users to Lompoc. Design aircraft, that Airport Reference Code B2 includes aircraft such as the Cessna CJ-2, which is a small business jet. Loading factors for the runway, again, that's with the, the users from the, coming from the east coast, and how much fuel they can take onboard with the runway lengths. And then incorporation of this master plan and land uses with the SB CAG Airport Land, Land Use Plan update. So this study resulted in a set of drawings, a set of airport layout plan drawings, with one of the most important drawings being what's on the screen in front of you, the airport layout plan itself. This is an important document for the FAA, it's used as a funding tool. Essentially, if your development is shown on there, and it's AIP eligible or eligible for FAA grant monies, if it's shown on here, then that discussion can begin. If the project is not shown on there, the FAA will immediately say, sorry, we can't help you. So this airport layout plan shows your, not only your 20-year development, but also beyond 20 years, should that demand develop, or pieces of that demand develop, and you need some support from the FAA to build facilities, primarily airfield pavement. Breaking this down into phases, for planning purposes, we divided the projects into three phases, a short term, which is zero to five years, a medium term, which is five to 10 years, and then long term, which would be 10 to 20 years. And the zero to five-year projects are what we felt were the most important projects, and had merited the, the highest amount of attention. So George Miller Drive rehabilitation was the number-one project. Reconstructing the apron is another high-priority project, along with the perimeter road on the, the east side of the airport to help keep the users or the tenants off of the runway. Also, developing a pavement management plan to help consolidate and define pavement rehabilitation and, and enhance the usable life of your airport. Installing airfield signage, and also upgrading electrical, and then, should demand develop, constructing some box hangers. Phase two is where we found the, a good place for the runway extension. That takes up the bulk of phase two. There's some additional hangers as well. Here's where we're putting the, the blast fence to help protect Highway 1, especially as we move that east end closer, it became more of a concern. Once the runway extension occurs, there is a need for the FAA to recertify the approaches that are in place, since the landing point moves. So that's an FAA process that'll be required. And in order to make room for these hangers, there's a need to relocate the weather sensors that are out there today. And the third phase, the long-term phase, is primarily hangar development on the south side of the airport. Also, the airport cafe was discussed down there, and a rehabilitation of your airport beacon tower. Looking beyond the 20-year plan, this is based on the high-growth forecast. Again, it's primarily hangar development on the south side of the airport, a little bit on the north side, and a little bit over on the east edge of the airport. And then, should the, should it be needed, an additional fuel tank. This is showing tabular form of all the projects, a little hard to read on the slide, I apologize. But, you know, some highlights here, George Miller Drive is completed, it's a, a great success for the airport. But also, just the point I really want to emphasize here is, this plan does not constitute a, the commitment to the build on the city's part. This is as demand develops, while there are specific years identified, it's purely for planning purposes to put together this plan. We wouldn't expect or recommend the city build 20 hangers in the next 10 years if there's not demand for that. So while it may show up as a 2017 project, I wouldn't do it unless you had 20 people waiting to, to buy those hangers, or rent those hangers from you. The, the big question, I'm sure on everyone's mind, is how much is this going to cost? It's quite a pretty penny or two. Fortunately, with the FAA's help, a lot of the projects can be supplemented, as the master plan was. FAA currently has 90% funding available for, for AIP-eligible projects. So what we see here on the first phase is about $8 million over the next five years, and some of that's already been spent on George Miller Drive, with about $5.6 million of that coming from the FAA, anticipated, and about half million dollars from city funds. Private development, this represents all the hangar development. We, we envision that to be third-party investors coming in, developing those facilities, or financing those facilities to be developed. And as you can see, that's actually about 30% of the whole project cost is hangar development. The, the big, big phase is phase two, and that's largely, or mostly due to the runway extension. And you can see as well, that's something that would be FAA-eligible for funding, so there's a high, high-dollar value there for FAA. So over the next 20 years, it's anticipated is about $31 million to build the recommended concept, but again, this is purely driven on market demand. Wouldn't, wouldn't build those 20 hangers unless you have 20 tenants for them. As part of the study, we did an environmental overview, which will serve as a baseline for future environmental studies. And as part of that, we looked at the airport land use safety zones. And actually, since we developed this document, there have been some changes to the Caltrans Land Use Handbook, but the zones really haven't changed. These were forwarded on to SB CAG for inclusion into their airport layout, land use plan And finally, in terms of next steps, environmental documentation will be done on a project-by-project basis for FAA requirements, and it cannot be overemphasized, excuse me, that this is not a commitment to build, but a plan for when demand develops on how to accommodate it. And that's all I have, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Councilor Lingle.
First of all, thank you for the report, it was very educational, very complete. And I know it's not really part of that study, but two questions, and maybe we'll need Mr. Fernbal to help with this. In the past couple of years, we've had two planes land in the field across H Street. Is there anything that the extension of the, the field, or the landing strip will help? Obviously, they landed, probably ran out of fuel, or Richard's coming up. Is there anything we can do to prevent that from happening again? You know, anything that we're doing right now?
In those two cases, one, it's believed the pilot was dead before he hit the ground, suffering from some kind of seizure. The other one, which took place recently, was a failed fuel pump, and he might have made the airport if he'd put his gear down later, but the FAA actually congratulated him on his ability to not land on H Street. So it's really a pilot thing that we can do. We can extend the runway across H Street, that would be, that would have helped one of them, but that's kind of a non-deal.
Okay. The second one, though, that he, if the runway had been extended and he hadn't lowered his gear, could he have possibly have made that, then?
Possibly.
Okay, yeah. Okay, thank you. And then the other question is, you may or may not be aware that we're considering a motorsports complex in that area. Does that come into the, this discussion at all?
Actually, I, I briefed him up on that beforehand, so I think he's prepared to talk about that also.
Yeah, yeah, it wasn't included as part of the master plan, and, and I have been talking with Richard and, and also with the FAA, just get an understanding of what they would be looking for. The FAA, you know, surface value does not see any conflicts with the motocross, motocross park in its planned location. There are some steps to go through, obviously, and there are periods or points where the FAA will be asking to review documentation. One of the, the big steps will actually be the environmental documentation. The FAA will be an approving agency on that document. So the, the environmental assessment is something that will need to be bought off on by the FAA, along with an updated airport layout plan.
Okay, you don't, I mean, they didn't see any problems, you don't see any problems with it?
You know, it's something that they're, they're going to have opportunities to review. I can't speak on their behalf, obviously. I've seen that sort of development adjacent to an airport before, and the, the biggest concern in that case actually was with the lighting of the, the motocross, motocross park. It wasn't shielded, so it caused glare to the pilots. So that's something that to keep in mind as you're going through this process, is it, not only is it adjacency to the airport, but potential distraction or glare to the pilots as they're operating.
Okay. And then one last thing, just as recently as last evening, we had a meeting in here, and there was some concern about, even presently, the noise from our airport to the surrounding areas. With more traffic coming in, larger, possibly larger personal jets, what kind of concern do we have with that?
That, that is a, certainly a concern. There are standards for that, obviously, and it's based upon noise modeling, with the 65 CNEL basically being your threshold line. And I don't think for this study, it's been a little while, I apologize, I don't think for this study, we, we looked at noise modeling for the, the future development. And part of the reason for that was, if you have less than 80,000 operations per year, it's not required to look at that. So that was one item we did not include in our scope. But from the noise modeling that was done previously, which actually had a similar level of operations, that 65 CNEL was primarily outside of the residential area. So it certainly doesn't mean that people don't hear the noise, we realize that, but that is something to continuously monitor, to make sure the homes aren't inadvertently being placed into that 65 CNEL. And then if they are, then there's potential mitigation measures that will be required later on.
Okay. Okay, thank you, and again, thank you for the report.
Would you say overall, excuse me, would you say overall that the, the jet aircraft with the newer engines are similar in noise intensity to the, the larger prop engines that exist today?
The difference is not so much the intensity, but also duration. So the no, the noise from a jet may be a little bit louder, but it's for a shorter dur, duration. What I've actually seen and experienced is people complain more about the propeller engines because they're a constant droning, and the, the jets just are in and out very quick, and they don't notice it as much.
And with regard to the extension of the runway, you said that would, would give an outbound jet a, a 6% fuel increase? Is that, is that substantial or not substantial in terms Is that substantial or not substantial in terms of, in other words, is that something we should be thinking about because we're looking at some jet aircraft increases because of some other things that are happening in the valley? Is that a substantial asset to someone coming here, or not very substantial?
It's a marginal improvement, to be honest. We were hoping to get the, you know, more, the 660-feet extension would be ideal, and it can accommodate a wider range of users and a better fuel capacity. So it was a pretty marginal improvement.
And at 660 feet, what would your fuel capacity increase would be?
I don't know the number offhand, but I think it was about 75% of that type of aircraft could operate there.
At full load?
Yeah.
So 75% of the aircraft could be at 100% of fuel? Councilmember Costa.
Thank you, Mary Lynn. I do have two questions. Phase one, I don't have any questions. But in regards to phase two, two questions. In regards to the blast fence, where was the complaint, where did the complaint come from in regards to the jet blast affecting Highway One and North H Street?
It was through one of the committee meetings. It was pointed out that when the, I think it was Falcon 900 was running up at the end of the runway, it was blowing dust across Highway One. So the jet blast fence would help redirect the dust kind of up away from Highway One. I think they compared it to almost zero visibility on the road at that time. So it was a way to help mitigate that. And also, you know, I think there's some crops that are out there occasionally, keeping the dirt moist would help, too, as a cheaper solution, perhaps.
So that's actually what I was curious about, because what material would the blast fence be?
It would be of a metal material. It'd be curved such that it would direct the wind and dust upwards rather than going straight across the road.
So, you know, my sort of gut reaction to that is sort of a little bit against that, only because I really think that part of the novelty of having an airport is that when you drive by, you can see it. And I wasn't aware that this was an issue. So my question is, is this something that will come back to council to be decided at a future date?
I think that's.
Yeah, any improvement would come back to us. So what you're saying is an alternative that, I'm sorry, might be that we just irrigated that area?
A combination of irrigating. We're showing a blast pad out there now, which isn't out there now. That would also help. It's an impervious surface, there wouldn't be any dust on that, that would help as well.
So for instance, if we put a blast pad out there now, that turned into a runway extension later, we could solve the problem now, and it would be part of a runway extension later?
That pavement could be used for runway extension. There still may be environmental clearance that you would have to go through in order to use it.
No, I mean, when we ultimately extend the runway, we wouldn't have to dig it back up again if we built it to the right spec now?
Right, that would be correct.
Okay.
But it costs more to do that now, instead of just as planned?
No, it wouldn't cost more because that pavement, as Mayor Lynn was saying, could be reused for a runway.
Okay.
Okay, so then, you know, I just kind of want to note it on the record that, for me, that my concern is the blast fence, you know, that I would say having the alternatives of the blast pad and irrigation as a first solution to see if that works before going into building a fence that would block essentially all view of the airport from Highway One.
Yeah, I agree with you. Councilmember Martin, oh, sorry.
If I can speak to that?
Absolutely.
A blast fence normally wouldn't go across the whole width of the airport. It would be more or less behind the runway run-up area. So when a jet pours on the coal, that blast, when it's on the runway preparing to take off, is diverted. So you don't have a fence cross the whole front of the rail port.
Thank you. Councilmember Martin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This slide that you have here, the forecast, to me is actually a very amazing slide, because if I were to look at this, I go well in the, between 1985 and basically the year 2010, there was basically no growth. It's flat. It's absolutely flat. There is no growth in the Lompoc Municipal Airport. But then you have to, I guess, are you required by law to have a forecast of low growth, baseline, and high growth?
You should look at a range of forecasts. It's not a law that you need to look at three set levels.
Okay. So if I were to look at this, why would you ever expect that you would have a high growth, and why would you even consider that?
As mentioned, we are looking not only at Lompoc, but the surrounding area. So the market area we looked at was Santa Barbara County, and also we included Oshano because it's so close to the border of the county. And what we were noticing as a whole, there was a trend of aircraft leaving Santa Barbara Airport. And what we were seeing is those aircraft were primarily going to San Ynez. But also looking at San Ynez, realize that they're essentially built out. There's no more room for any more hangars or any more apron areas there. So as people continue this trend of leaving Santa Barbara for fees or what have you, they need somewhere to go. We're next up on the north coast here, going up the coast north. This is the next spot. So that's one of the reasons why you do see an aggressive growth, but also looking at the security requirements at an airport such as Santa Maria, which has commercial surface. And that gets to be a challenge for a user who's a recreation-type pilot, or even some small business users, that it's extra cost, it's extra time, perhaps they would also want to come down here where there is not that commercial service aspect, and it becomes a more efficient operation for them. So that's why you are seeing an increase there.
So, okay, so basically, your market analysis is saying that the Lompoc Airport will grow, given the geographical and the demands of the county. Okay, we cannot go to San Ynez, Santa Maria is too expensive for X, Y, and Z reasons, and Lompoc continues to be an affordable place. So that's really basically what your market analysis is telling you, correct?
Yeah, that's what we're projecting.
Okay, so if the Lompoc Theater is going to grow, and if our market analysis is going to say that, has our economic development guru, I don't know what else to call you, our economic development staff have come out with a plan that would capture this incredible market opportunity? Because it is a market opportunity, according to the trend that you're showing us here. So I would like to see this city to look into this and tell us, oh, it looks like that we have an opportunity for growth. And I think the city is looking for an opportunity of growth that will bring tax revenues. So given what you have shown here, with your technical expertise and your market analysis, we're concluding that we are set for growth. So the next step for me, at least as a council member, would be to ask the staff to tell us, what are we going to do about it? Give us a plan to capture this growth. Thank you.
And maybe our friends on the Economic Development Committee, who are diligently taking notes as you're saying that, Councilmember Martin, could weigh in on that for us, too. Councilmember Costa.
Thank you, Mary Lynn. A quick point to that, actually, the Santa Maria Airport has like this really wonderful handout. It's like this huge tri-fold piece, it's full color and gloss, the whole thing, basically marketing the Santa Maria Airport. So I think that's a fantastic point to look into. I did want to confirm here, though, about the blast fence, once again, I have it here at 530 feet long, and on the recommended airside development, it actually shows that it covers really the entire portion there. So I don't know if that is incorrect, or what, I just wanted to confirm, it's 10 feet tall, 530 feet long, as proposed.
That will probably be adjusted once we get down to the actual construction drawings for that. They'll decide where the exhaust actually starts to hit the road and pick up dirt and debris or anything like that. It'll also depend on how long the blast pad may be, and how much actual open area there is between the runway and the access road that's going to go around that side, too, because that'll be paved also. You could end up with a very small, slim area of dirt, and you could plant that and, you know, take care of a lot of your problem.
Yeah, the width of that will be determined on the actual aircraft that'll be using the airport at that time. For cost estimating purposes, we're assuming the full length as a worst-case scenario.
Okay, so in a perfect way, we wouldn't even have to use that at all, but thank you for clarifying that. And then I think that you pretty much answered this question. In regards to Phase Three, my concern is the impacts on the tenant south of Aviation Drive. And so, but that'll all come through an environmental impact study, correct, at that time? Just wanted to confirm. Thank you.
Councilmember Starbuck.
Yeah, just real quick, all this talk about the blast fence, jet blast deflectors for high-performance aircraft are typically not over 20-foot wide and 10-foot tall. We're not talking about some massive structure out there, are we, that the FAA requires? I mean, if it's good enough for the military to shoot them off of a carrier, certainly we don't need to meet that requirement.
Correct, it wouldn't be a massive structure.
I know.
Approximately, how tall would you guess it would be to deflect over H? 10 feet?
About 10 feet.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you very much, appreciate your presentation, and we'll appreciate your help on our little project with the motorsports park and the FAA. Thank you for communicating with them. He's been talking to them about that, to help us with it, and he didn't even charge us, so he's my new hero. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
And next, the city administrator's report.
Honorable Mayor, city council members, and community viewers, thank you for the opportunity to report a few items tonight. First, as requested by council at the meeting of October 2nd, a memo update on the Lompoc Code Enforcement Program was prepared by Senior Code Enforcement Officer Steve Boggs and distributed in council boxes. To brief, can you turn that down? Thank you. To brief you regarding this memo, Mr. Boggs provided the background on several council meetings related to discussions regarding proactive code enforcement policy leading to council's eventual adoption of Ordinance Number 1584, parent 12, on May 1st, 2012, allowing the administrative citation to be issued in instances where voluntary compliance with the Lompoc Municipal Code nuisance provisions cannot be achieved. The ordinance went into effect on June 14th, 2012, and Mr. Boggs' memo notes the City of Lompoc Code Enforcement now consists of complaint-driven code enforcement, as well as comprehensive, a comprehensive component, which is directed towards violations of provisions of the Lompoc Municipal Code, Section 17, dot 14, dot 10, Maintenance of Property Nuisance. To clarify both, Mr. Boggs outlined in his memo the complaint-based code enforcement and nuisance code enforcement. And under the complaint-based code enforcement, the process applies to violations that are not clearly visible from the public right-of-way. Typically, violations such as substandard housing, illegal construction, and work performed without permits are addressed through the complaint-based process, and the complainant's identity is confidential and only revealed if the matter proceeds to court. Now, with the nuisance code enforcement, violations outlined in Code Section 17, 14, 140.10, can be reported using a complaint form or by calling the complaint into the city staff. City staff can also initiate code enforcement action when a violation is clearly visible from the public right-of-way. At the meeting of May 1st, 2012, city council meeting, staff was directed to include an informational program as the first step of implementing Ordinance Number 1584. And during the month of July, Lompoc residents received information in their utility bills, which included a copy of the City of Lompoc Nuisance Ordinance, and informed residents that an administrative citation may be issued if voluntary compliance with the ordinance cannot be achieved. So if voluntary compliance cannot be achieved, then the next step is a warning administrative citation is provided to the individual that has the violation, and a data set to correct the violation. Failure to correct the violation or violations results in a fine for each nuisance code enforcement or violation remaining after the date of the citation. Ordinance 1584 set the following citation amounts: $25, $100, and $500 for the first, second, and third offenses of the same code provisions within 12 months. Some current activities for the period of May 1st, 2012, through October 11th, 2012, Mr. Boggs reports that 546 site inspections were performed for new and existing code enforcement cases. Violations are photographed and then documented in the City of Lompoc Tracket database. And then during May 1st, 2012, through October 10th, 2012, 188 code enforcement cases have been opened, and 254 cases have been closed. And currently, there are 194 active cases. Some stats regarding the administrative citations, as of October 11th, 13 warning administrative citations have been issued. One administrative citation with fines has been issued. Two warning citations have resulted in compliance, and three have been issued resulting in partial compliance of multiple violations. And seven warning citations are pending response from recipients. Attached to Mr. Boggs' memo is the minutes of council meetings in December 11, February and May 2012. As well, he attached the Lompoc Municipal Code, Section 17, 140.10. And Senior Code Officer Steve Boggs is here tonight, should council have questions related to this memo. And as stated earlier, if council desires an update on the city code enforcement program, could be agendized at a future council meeting.
I guess, Steve, could you, you know, this administrative citation process was an experiment to see, could you kind of tell us how you think it's working? Is it a good tool? Is it helping you?
Well, I'd say initially, it is. It's a, I would say it's a tool. It's a tool that we're using, and we've just begun implementing to obtain compliance when voluntary compliance cannot be achieved. And we are beginning to see results from that.
So you're happy with what you got and the tools working for you?
I would say at this point, yes.
Okay. Probably would like to hear that answer again in about six months, you got a little more time under your belt. Councilmember Lingle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm sure someplace in this report, it tells me the effectiveness of our program, but I don't quite, I'm not getting a real warm feeling to tell me that it really is effective. You just told me that it's a tool for you, and I appreciate that. But I'm looking at the administrative citations, as of October 11th, 2012, 13 warning administrative citations have been issued. This meeting will probably last a couple more hours. I can guarantee you, I can go out before the meeting and come up with 13 pieces of property or something that probably should have these warnings. So I'm just wondering, why only 13? Just, I can walk a mile and come up with more than 13 places that should have warnings, you know?
No, Bob, this is the step after the friendly letter part doesn't work. So most of them are responding to the friendly letter, that's what this says.
Well, no, no, there's only been, how many letters gone out?
No, we've had 254 cases closed in the time period, so.
Those are total cases. I'm just, so I'm getting a, I'm having problems determining whether this is really effective. And maybe, maybe it's in here someplace that I just don't see it, but maybe the next report, if we can give me, give me an example of more detail than how many letters were sent out, how many, because I don't see a lot of letters that have been sent out on here. The effectiveness. that have been sent out on here. The effectiveness of it. I'm just not sure it's an effective program at this point.
I—I think, maybe I'm a little more familiar with it, so let me—yeah, the 254 cases that have been closed all got the friendly letter or a couple friendly letters. And then at the end of the day, the ones that wouldn't cooperate get the administrative citation. So the administrative citation is really the tool at the end for the people who don't want to cooperate. It's not used on everybody else that wants to cooperate. So—Councilmember Starbuck?
The—the one question that I have is, what is our policy with people that own multiple vehicles, trailers, the motor home that's plugged into a house, these type of things? They're not addressed in here, but it's been addressed before. We know there's problems with it. We've had a citizen come in that was warned about one where it's been parked for years. What is the policy on that?
Well, there's—when you talk about the policy, we have policy for—on private property, and that's what's addressed in 17.140, point 010, in Section J. And in terms of motor homes, they can be parked on your driveway, but they cannot be parked on an unpaved surface. Can't be kept on an unpaved surface. In terms of being plugged in, well, let me clarify, because they can be parked on an unpaved surface for up to 72 hours. So if somebody's preparing for a camping trip, that's—that sort of thing. But what you're describing, are you talking about—um, are you talking about motor homes just parked in front of homes, or?
Individual owners, various locations.
Are you talking about on the street?
You know that there's some areas that are a huge concentration of trailers and motor—motor homes and things, but, you know, just overall.
Well, there's—there's several locations where you can find them. If they're parked in the street, there's a 72-hour—it's 72 hours that they can park without moving, and that's enforced by the police department. If it's on private property, it can be located in a rear yard fenced. It can be in the driveway as long as it has a current registration. Where you run into issues is where they're parked in front lawns, unpaved surfaces, in excess of 72 hours. Or if they're plugged in, you know, if you're talking about people living in them, we have ordinance against that as well.
So what happens in 72 hours? They move them afoot and they're back to—where they're within 72 hours again?
Okay, you're talking about on the public streets?
Yeah, they're not going to move them around in their yard every 30 days.
Um, okay, well, in terms of that, that's enforced by the police department. On the —on the streets, that's enforced by the police department.
There's a parking citation then, or?
Excuse me, Councilmember Starbuck. I'd like to have Chief Ralston weigh in on that, but essentially, our 72 parking—72-hour parking provisions is in Chapter 10 of our city code. And it reads, "It shall be unlawful to park or leave standing a vehicle upon a street or highway for 72 or more consecutive hours." That's it.
Chiefs?
So I guess, Chief, what happens then is that 72 hours, somebody moves it a foot, and it's good to sit there for another 72 hours? Is that what happens?
Yes, sir. That's—that's correct. The way that the ordinance is read, that it can be moved a distance, unspecified distance, and it then falls back into that category where we have to go out and cite the trailer or the—the vehicle again and wait for another 72 hours.
Councilmember Bartner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to make a comment, first of all, to Councilmember Starbuck and the conversation that went on regarding this 72 hours and how the public uses this. By just moving their vehicle a couple of inches, and they get another 72 hours. When I came to this council four years ago, we discussed that at great length, and we go, "What a waste of time." I mean, why have an ordinance that all you do is members of the public are playing around by just moving? We're wasting precious police time going over there and giving a citation, and the person—that individual can move their motor home five inches, five inches, and they have another 72 hours. Very frustrating for the people involved, for the government, for everybody, because it really doesn't go anywhere. It seems that the ordinance is not working. Here, we're four years later. I'd like to take on—on Councilmember Lingle. I don't think another report is going to help us. We clearly—this has been, in my view, a four-year problem. We came here—I —and I won't speak for Councilmember Lingle, but we came here four years ago, and we said, "You know, the code enforcement in this city is just not working. There is a lot of issues with it." Four years later, we are in the same place. I got an email from a citizen saying that they will not submit another complaint, as it will do little good. It will just be a statistics to support more grant funding for City BG without improvement. The government appears to get endless, no deadlines. We asked to solve a problem, and we can go four years and 10 years, and we're still going at it and not solving the problem. So all I can say, the system is not working. The program is not working. Councilmember Lingle feels the frustration. I feel the frustration. Members of the public feel the frustr—frustration. You know, you can give me the details with 20 citations and 500 cases closed, and then you have a member of the public saying, "Well, that's just a statistics. It's not solving the problems." The town is still looks the same way it looked four years ago. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, moving along. Any staff requests and announcements? Our city administrators, do you have any other presentations? That's your only one.
Yes. Mr. Mayor and council, I just wanted to take the opportunity to emphasize some city successes, such as two recent public safety events. The Fire Station Open House, that was held on Saturday, October 6th, at Fire Station 1, and the past weekend's October—I mean, Coctoberfest, held Saturday at the Dick Newes Community Center. And both events were very well-attended. Fire Chief Ladapow reports the Fire Station Open House was the most successful open house event in the department's history. 600 children and 300 adults participated in learning opportunities. And he directly attributes the success of this event to our Long Polk Firefighters Foundation, Home Depot, Healthy Long Polk Coalition, Forest Square Church, AMR, Stansum Clinic, Vandenberg Air Force Fire Department, our firefighters' union, and our fire department staff. And then Police Chief Ralston reports the first annual Coctoberfest fundraiser event netted $12,000 for the police foundation, and 230 tickets were sold. So Chief Ralston acknowledges the success is directly attributed to the Long Polk Fire—Long Polk Police Foundation, police department staff, the police explorers, and the many community volunteers. So Chiefs Ladapow and Ralston are to be commended on these community events. And in partnership with our chiefs, we especially thank our community for making these two successful events a lot of fun. And, Mr. Mayor, I have no other announcements or requests. However, I would like to invite Fire Chief Ladapow to the podium to announce the Long Polk Firefighters kickoff of Season of Hope Food and Toy Drive. Thank you.
Chief?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, members of the audience, we are on a roll. Our department—obviously, our departments believe in community participation and reaching out to our community. As such, the fire department has partnered with the first-ever KSBY Season of Hope, and we have launched two phases for the Season of Hope. Right now, we're in the non-perishable food phase. The neat thing about what KSBY has done is they've come out to the local fire departments and said, "We want you to join us. We want you to join us in taking care of our citizens and our communities." And you get to dictate—you get to direct where—the goods go that are collected. So in our case, the Long Polk Food Bank will be receiving the charitable—the non-perishable food donations. And as we transition to toys, which will commence on November the 16th, all the toys that are collected, which are new unwrapped toys, will go to the local chapter of Toys for Tots—Toys for Tots. The barrels are located at Station 1. We anticipate that KSBY will be visiting us sometime in November to do some live remotes that you're all familiar with. And we are really pleased to be part of this particular project, as we are with all projects that help our community.
Any questions?
Thank you, Chief. Personally, having attended the—the fire event, I want to—I want to really, really thank the guys from Home Depot who just went over the top to put on a great event, and the folks from Forest Square Church who served more kinds of food at one time than I thought was possible. And I also learned that you can jump-start a cotton candy machine by spinning it with your hand. So there's a—a new skill learned in life.
Snow cones?
Snow cones, yes. And the Coctoberfest was a great deal of fun. Good fun was had by all. And thanks to all of the breweries that went there and donated their wares and made it a great event, so. You guys scored big. What are you doing next week? Come on, you know, you're on a roll. One at a time, I got you. Okey-dokey. Now, oral communications, your opportunity to talk to us for five minutes about any subject. If you are here to talk about an item that's on the agenda, and you can wait—I prefer that you do that, but if you can't wait, come on down.
Uddhida Devreese, good evening. Given the confusion at the previous meeting about when agenda items were going to come to the council, you know, and the public interest that this has generated, as evidenced by the Long Polk Record article, missed deadlines and lost agenda items, and sort of just the ongoing desire for more transparency and openness in our community, I was wondering if it would be possible for the city administrator to—to give a report at the next city council meeting, just of all pending agenda items and city council requests. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Mike McIntosh, and I live at 520 Crosby Drive, and I've lived there for quite a while. And my only question to you, council members, is on to their—the voucher registers, those two voucher amounts, can you tell me what they are for before that goes to—before you go ahead and just pass that motion?
What's the—what—which voucher numbers are they?
Well, one's for $549,000, one is for $913,000.
That's—that's the total of the register. So that's the total of all of the items within it. Is there one in particular on the list?
Yeah.
Yeah. Is one of those—do either one of those address the—the proposed CNG fill facility on Central? No, no, that—that's fully paid for by the Long Polk Unified School District.
Okay. And will that be up on your council agenda at a later date, since it's already gone to planning commission?
That—that item would not come back to council. That was a planning commission decision.
Okay. And so any further complaints or discussion on that? How would that occur?
Um, if you want to chat with me after, we can—we can look at it. Sure, absolutely.
Okay. Yeah. Just for the record, it was something that was poorly designed and ill-conceived, and it doesn't serve the community or the homeowners in that area. If you have any questions, I'll answer them now, but otherwise, I'll get with you.
Uh, it seems like there's a question to the left.
Mary Lynn, I appreciate you coming forward in public. I think that that was the first right step to do, is say it in public. But if you want to put it in writing and send it to all of us, I think that that would actually be more helpful than just the two of you speaking for my personal awareness of the situation. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Councilman Bartner?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I would not like to just see a conversation between the mayor and the member of the public. I think the staff needs to give a proper response as to this gentleman's issue, as to where he can go and do his complaints. So I would like to ask the legal counsel or the city administrator to tell him right here what is the legal process and what is the proper procedure for him to voice his concern. After the planning commission, what is the proper procedure for a—
And by the—I was at the planning commission last week.
So the proper—so we would like to find out what would be the proper procedure after the planning commission, and there is a citizen that has some issues over it. So I'm sure that the government has a procedure for it, and I would really appreciate that the city administrator or the legal counsel can provide it right here, right now, for this gentleman.
I think his light's on.
Through the mayor, typically, a planning commission decision is appealable to the city council. I don't know specifically if the one that was—the planning commission decision on this matter is appealable to the city council. My suggestion would be that this gentleman contact the planning division, Lucille Breeze, and ask her if this is appealable, and whether the time limit has run for that appeal. If it has run, then there really isn't a legal mechanism for this council to be able to do something about a concern regarding that particular item. If the school board has not yet made it a final decision on that matter, since it's a school board matter, maybe contacting the school board, maybe—or go to a school board meeting, maybe a way—or the school superintendent, maybe another approach.
Okay, let me—
So I'll connect you—
One other possible question. What was the grant amount, and are you over the grant amount?
The grant was not with us. The grant was a grant from the California Department of Energy.
I understand that. But if you—if the grant is not enough to do the project, who makes up the shortfall?
Uh, that would be the responsibility of the school district. Our only responsibility as a city is to review the project. We're not financially involved in it.
Okay. So my best course of action, again?
Um, if you—if you want to give your phone number to Ms. Gallivan right there, she'll have Lucille contact you.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing no one rise, we'll close oral communications and come back to the consent calendar. And the consent calendar will approve—approval of minutes of the council meeting of October 2nd, approval expenditures for payroll in the amount of $1,265,000, a voucher register for $549,000, a voucher register for $913,000. I confess, I didn't read them. If there's one in there for Smitty's Towing or for any of my businesses, I hereby abstain. Item number three, amend of the Long Polk Municipal Code, Chapter 15, dot 48, flood plain management to incorporate requirements of the National Flood Insurance Program, a second reading. Item number four, amendment number one to the Breeze Memorandum of Understanding. Item number five, final acceptance of Project FY09W1, the waterline and valve replacement project, for final payment. Item number six, issuance of a purchase order in the amount of $226,700 for 500 feet of MCM cable to be installed along Barton and Central Avenues between H and O Street. And this is the Central Avenue cable replacement because of the—the failures we're having in that older underground cable. Are there any items that a council member would like to have removed from the consent calendar? Seeing no lights, I'd accept a motion to approve the consent calendar. Councilmember Costa?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, could we vote, please? And that passes 5-0. Thank you. Um, no, let's do the appointments, because we've got some people waiting on that. We'll do the Economic Development Committee appointments to vacancies and the addition of associate member positions. Teresa.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Teresa Gallivan, Economic Development Director. At the August 7th city council meeting, the Economic Development Committee presented its quarterly update to council. During that meeting, the committee shared its concerns about the ability to attain a quorum and conduct business, and suggested that the committee's membership be expanded to include three alternate members. The committee also shared that it would like to ensure its membership reflects the demographic diversity of the Long Polk Valley population, and council during this quarterly update suggested that the committee prepare a list of potential candidates for council to consider for appointments. Since then, we have worked to identify candidates to fill vacancies and prepared a slate for council's consideration. The committee met on October 4th and approved forwarding the attached slate to the council for review. In addition, the committee reviewed all the previously submitted applications that did not move forward to the committee on its original foundation. not move forward to the committee on its original foundation, and it looked through those applications to bring the slate forward that reflects the demographic and business diversity that is the makeup of our committee. The Economic Development Committee also recommends that one of the associate member positions be held by the president/CEO of the Lompoc Valley Chamber of Commerce and Visitors Bureau. And that would establish... that appointment would structurally support the partnership and enhance the EDC's ability to conduct business. The associate member positions would have all the responsibilities of regular committee members, except that the member would only count towards a quorum and be allowed to vote when there are not enough regular members to make a quorum. So that explains the changes that were made to the amendment of the Economic Development Committee general functions, which has been amended here to reflect those items that we just discussed. And then attached, you have a slate of recommended regular or associate member appointments, and then we have a slate of recommended associate member appointments. And we ask that you appoint two members to fill current vacancies that we have, that we adopt the amended Economic Development Committee description, which is attached, and we direct the clerk to post vacancies for the newly created associate member positions, and ask that we bring the associate member position appointments back to council for appointment on October 30th at the special meeting that we'll be having. And members of the Economic Development Committee Chair, Steve Pepe, and Vice Chair Janelle Osborne are here also this evening in support of bringing this to your consideration.
My understanding is that councilmember Bartner and councilmember Costa need to each make an appointment for the vacant positions.
Correct.
Okay. So maybe we can separate this issue first for discussion purposes, and we'd go with a quick council discussion before I open it for public comment on the concept of changing the structure of the Economic Development Committee as recommended by the committee and drafted by staff. Is there any comment on that at this time? Okay. In that case, I'm going to go to public comment. Who out here would like to talk to us about this? Come on, Steve, you got to do it.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, and citizens. Steve Pepe, we've recommended these changes because we're having some difficulty getting a quorum. We've changed our meetings to go some during... half during the day and half at night, but still in all, we're having a difficulty with people who have jobs and other activities, and then vacations and travel and all the rest. And we've had two meetings where we barely made the quorum, and so that coupled with the fact there are two vacancies now, I understand there's going to be a third vacancy fairly shortly, and so that then drives the numbers in the wrong direction. And also, this gives you the opportunity to do... increase our diversity, both in terms of demographics, in terms of businesses. We don't have anybody from the restaurant industry, and I understand our one person from the hospitality industry and hotel industry is not going to continue with us, so we really do need to get those two segments better represented on our group.
Thank you. Any questions? Councilmember Bartner?
Where are the applications?
They're back here in the back.
So I guess not in the soft version. I mean, I only looked at my agenda in here, and I don't see any applications. So... and I don't have an agenda packet. There was none in my mailbox, so...
Since they're... your appointments, let me pass your mine. Given this circumstance and the need to take a look at this, let's take our 10-minute break right now. All right, if we can come back to order, and we're going to open... is there anyone else that would like to speak on this subject? Anyone else for oral communication on item number seven? Seeing none, we'll close oral communication, and we'll come back to the council. And first, I'd like to have a motion and a second to approve the amendment to the... the description... the operating description of the Economic Development Committee.
So moved.
And a second, please.
I'll second.
Okay, so the first is by councilmember Lingel, and the second is by councilmember Costa, too. And this is... this decision is simply to amend the structure of the Economic Development Commission as recommended by the commission and the staff report. Are there any other questions with regard to that? Councilmember Lingel?
No questions. When you move on, I've got a comment.
Got it, okay. And could we go ahead and vote on that, please? And that passes 5-0, thank you. And now, two nominations, one from councilmember Costa and one from councilmember Bartner. And councilmember Costa, sorry.
Thank you, Mary Lynn. I would like to make a motion to appoint Jeremy Ball to the Economic Development Committee.
And a second, please.
Second.
And councilmember Bartner, do you have a...
I have a question.
And a second, please.
I'll second.
Okay, and is there... are there... I'm all right. Is there any further discussion on those two nominations at this time? No, there's only two at this time. Councilmember Bartner, did you... your light's on. Did you want to say something?
No.
Okay, no problem. Okay, seeing no further discussion, I'm going to accept this as a single motion for the purposes of a vote unless anyone objects. Everybody good with that? Okay? So we'll be voting on councilmember Costa's nomination of Jeremy Ball and councilmember Bartner's nomination of Maria Hall. You guys got the L's going, didn't you? And could we vote, please? And that passes 5-0, thank you. Are there any other discussion points with regard to item number seven before I move on? Seeing none, we'll move forward. Thank you, committee folks, we appreciate that. And now we'll have a report... item number eight, a report on the business...
Do we have to...
No, that has to be advertised, is my... yeah, that's... they have a recommendation, but it still has to be advertised, because they're... it has to have a 10-day advertising period. That'll come back to us at the next meeting, or the first meeting in November, correct?
The special meeting on October 30th.
Okay, thank you. So all of you out there who would like to be involved and are interested in applying for those positions, put your name in. And now, the item number eight, the report on the city business tax certificate process related to the California Business and Professions Code, Section 16102. And Joe, I think this one's yours.
Yes, Mayor. The council at last meeting asked for a report on this code section because of a citizen had asked some questions about it. Section 16102 of the Business and Profession Code, very simply, it grants those people who have been released from the military, honorably discharged from the military, have the right to obtain a business tax certificate to sell goods that they own. In essence, if they have materials and merchandise or products that they own, they can sell them, and that business, although they still need a business tax certificate, they can get the certificate without having to pay the fee for it or the tax for it. The significant difference, I think, that we should all understand is that what it protects, or not protects, what the right it gives is to sell goods. It doesn't give a veteran the right to provide a service for free, in terms of free meaning without having to pay the tax or the fee. So if someone has a, for example, a business of painting signs or fixing cars, they would need to still pay the fee and pay the tax to obtain a business tax certificate to provide that service. If they're selling goods as well as doing that service, then because the city's business taxes are based on gross receipts, when they submit their gross receipts amounts, they could deduct from the gross receipts amount that they submit for the tax calculation, deduct from that the amount that they earn by selling the goods, but still include the amount that they are getting for providing the service. So it's not an absolute ability of someone who was dishonorably discharged to get a business tax certificate without paying any fee or tax unless all they're doing is selling goods.
So as an example, if you had a business where you did $500,000 for the sales and $250,000 of it was merchandise, and $250,000 was labor, then the tax amount that you paid off our city tax chart would be based on the $250,000 labor rather than the $500,000 gross sales?
If the $250,000 on the merchandise was merchandise that they owned.
Correct. Really simple. Are there any questions from council before we open this up for public comment? Seeing none. And so this will be now for oral communication or for public comment on this item dealing with the veteran's business tax certificate. Is there anyone that wants to talk to us about that this evening? Frank?
First, I would like to say good evening, and my name is Frank Rube, and I do live in Lompoc. I want to thank the mayor for his quick action in assigning my veteran concerns to the city attorney that went right after the five-minute talk at the last city council meeting. I also want to thank the city attorney for his quick action in reporting back. Came back on the agenda today. But there is one part that I'm still troubled by the report. But let's go on here. On page one of the city attorney's report, he shows the entire California law 16102 with a brief history. The city attorney concluded on page two, "Based on the foregoing pursuant to 16102, the city must issue an honorably discharged veteran a city business tax certificate without requiring payment of any processing fees or tax when the business operated by the veteran or his or her agent or employee sells merchandise owned by the veteran." The troubling part here is in the next paragraph. "In Lompoc, when an applicant shows proof he or she has received an honorable discharge from any branch of the United States Armed Forces, and that individual's business is the selling of goods or wares, the city clerk's office processes an exempt business tax certificate for that individual's business. The city does not impose a tax or fee to process that certificate." A paragraph continues, "The city does not affirmatively inquire whether each applicant for a business tax certificate is an honorably discharged veteran." The city attorney continues, "The city currently does not charge honorably discharged veterans a business tax in conformance with 16102. On the October 2nd city council meeting, I report that three veterans, including myself, called City Hall for information regarding this. I was told myself, being a veteran, that I did not qualify because I was not disabled. The city threw disabled into that law. City staff has recently denied a veteran business owner because after buying parts from a wholesale distributor and selling these parts at a retail price to customers, he would also install those parts. City staff informed him that this installation service disqualifies him. He did apply with his DD 2214 and his honorable discharge." Now, referring to the law on page one, the reasons for the city's denial are not in the law. The law does not say that there are any restrictions after a business owner, a veteran business owner, sells his goods to the customer. The only restrictions in there, first of all, he has to buy and sell material, and the second restriction is it can't be a bar. That's all 16102 says. It doesn't say the restrictions that the city attorney is talking about. I don't know where those came from. But if you read the page one, the whole law is there. Now, this is... I don't believe that that's the intent of the law, like the city attorney is saying. Can you imagine this? Our veteran music store owner is denied because he buys and sells musical instruments, and he gives music lessons to his customers. Should that disqualify him from 16102? I don't think so. Or how about this one? How about a Vietnam War veteran who buys and sells mufflers, but is denied because he installs the mufflers? Here again, these people are owning this equipment, okay? They're actually owning this property that they're selling, and just because they are installing or doing their customers a favor, more or less, by installing this equipment, should not disqualify them from 16102. Now, remember this city attorney's statement. "The city does not affirmatively inquire whether each applicant for a business tax certificate is an honorably discharged veteran. The city does not have a place on a business license application that asks if the applicant is an honorably discharged veteran. There is information on the city website regarding business licenses, but not for veterans."
Need to wrap it up.
Okay, well, I'm asking four things here. Number one, the business license application be amended to show that if the guy is a veteran. This city should have that information. Number two, publish 16102 on the city website. Number three, the California law should be a city ordinance. Number four, this has gone on for a number of years, and veterans have been unfairly charged for business licenses. Since the city didn't care whether they were a veteran or not, and nobody asked a question, they were unfairly charged. I believe at this point it would be good for the city to give all veteran business owners their business licenses at no expense, at no expense, and this should be made in effect until further notice.
Thank you. Okay, so Frank, let me explain one more thing again. If someone is a veteran, and they deliver services, they don't get a free license. But the goods that they sell, they don't have to... because the way you pay for a license is based on the dollar volume that you do. So for instance, if you do a very small dollar volume, the license amount is very small. They can not declare all the parts sales, which then reduces the price of the license. And you know, you can check with Stacy tomorrow, and she can give you the spreadsheet. But that's what the state law says, and we don't have to incorporate into the city ordinance because it's a state law and we're obligated to follow it, because we're a general law city.
I can tell you this, there's a lot of jurisdictions, just like Lompoc, that are not doing this correctly. I sent a paper up to the American Legion, Department of California, that was approved by the Judge Abicat to go out to the district commanders of the American Legion, and part of that was this word "service." The American Legion Judge Abicat agreed that "service" is not part of that law. There's only two restrictions, the bar and buying or selling of goods. It doesn't say anything else.
I think we might have to agree to disagree on that, but if you want to bring me the information, I'd be happy to give it to the city attorney, and he could review it. You know, this isn't the last day, so you know, you're welcome to bring it down and share it with the city attorney.
Mary Lynn, I have a question.
Surely.
Mr. Rube, were you ever able to get some of these instances in writing by any chance when somebody was denied?
The fellow that was denied? No, I can tell you this, I started this about two years ago, okay? And we had a couple meetings with the city administrator, myself and Joe McCormick, the commander of the Lompoc Veterans Council, and that went nowhere. We... we... We talked about, we talked about letters to the editor, went nowhere. Somebody told me that I shouldn't come to the council because the city administrator would take care of these problems, you know, if you had any issues. So then we started the economic development committee and somebody told me that, well, we didn't have a veteran category, but we have veterans on the economic development committee. So I took that to a fellow that, that was on the committee. There again, it went nowhere. My last, my last choice was coming to the council. And not that I want, not that I wanted to do this. Because I felt voluntary compliance by, by the city would be a lot easier than going through this, you know? But, but I can tell you, the fellow who has been denied, one of the council members, probably two of the council members have talked to him. And they can confirm exactly what I'm telling you, that they, that he brought his, his discharge papers to the counter and was denied because he, he has the service. But it's not, veterans don't deserve this. You know, these guys are coming back from, there's one small veteran now that came, just came back from Afghanistan, has a very small company, concrete company. And, and he's having a difficult time. He hired one other veteran. But, but our city, our, our city is not even advising these people, you know? I mean, we ought to be helping these men and women when they come back.
Thank you.
They're needing assistance.
Thank you. I appreciate, and I appreciate you actually bringing this to us and taking it to this level. I know it takes some of your time. I think for council's sake, really quickly, I just want to make two quick comments. I think editing the business application is fairly simple. You know, adding that question, if the box is checked yes, it's something we can follow up on. I also think publishing this law is very simple to put on the city website under some business tab, whichever tab that would be, I have to go look on the website. Just as another resource that's out there. I think that, you know, I'm completely comfortable taking those two suggestions and having staff implement those two suggestions. Thank you.
Councilmember Lingle.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I agree with Councilmember Costa that we do at least those two things. The other portion I'd like to see us do is when we get a business application, a business license application, and the person has indicated he or she is a veteran, that then we take the time to explain to them the process of what they do have to declare. In other words, the, the product, they do not have to declare, or the product, they do have to, you know, the product they do not have to, the service they would have to declare. So just take a little bit of time that we explain to the individual how the process works. And it should take no more than a few minutes of our time at the counter.
Maybe what might be helpful, Joe, maybe you can just draft a little short piece that the clerk could have to pass out so that everybody gets the same story and the explanation is in enough detail. But, okay? Everybody good with that? I don't, who's next? Sorry. Councilmember Bartner.
Yes, and I would agree with the two suggestions that were supported by Councilmember Costa and Councilmember Lingle. So you have the three of those there. So that should be enforceable and done. It seems to me that, you know, that the perception is, is that the city's not, really is not paying any particular attention to veterans. And, you know, I think that's a problem. We, we live right next to a base. So I think we should be, you know, a little more educated in what are the benefits and what are the laws that are helpful for our veterans that are coming home. And as was said, if there is, you know, an extra piece of paper at the counter that explains these procedures, and that would be very useful. I mean, let's, that, that won't take any money and time. It just takes a slightly little better customer, you know, response, more individualized to a particular set of, you know, members of the public. And that's the veterans. So I would really encourage the staff to, to be cognizant of that.
And I think you have five up and down nods for that. I'm sure Councilmember Starbuck feels the same way. But you can speak for yourself. You're next.
Well, I'm sure I'm going to get a couple of questions on this, so I want to be very, very clear. I happen to know that when you pay your business sales tax, you're doing it based upon your gross. If your gross is 100,000, this is labor, this is parts, this is everything, it's typically $140 to renew your city business license. A for instance here would be, say half of your gross is based on labor at 50,000. So your city business tax would be $70. Is this the fee that's waived then with this?
The difference is waived.
The difference is waived then?
So you pay the 70.
So you pay the 70 instead of the 140. This is the part where there could be the veteran benefit, as long as the veteran qualifies, when he comes in and applies for a city business license then, he has no track record or anything. So it should be a free startup license at this point then. And then the following year, based upon the gross and the deviation between material and labor would determine what the tax rate would be then. Am I reading this clear?
May I?
I think, yeah. Let me go with the, with the attorney, if you don't mind.
He doesn't have his light on.
Yeah. He knows how to turn it on and I saw the, I saw the look on his face.
I'm perfectly willing to do that. The city clerk's the one that handles it, so I thought it'd be helpful to hear her tell the answer because she knows the answer. But the issuing the permit, there's a fee to process the permit. If someone's, if someone is required to have the permit, a veteran is required to have the permit, and they're doing more than selling goods, they have to pay the fee for the processing of the permit and pay the tax. How the, how the initial fee is determined, I would suggest you ask the city clerk that question.
Because the processing fee, if I'm not mistaken, is $10 on top of the business license itself.
It's a $10 renewal fee. For new applicants, it's a $20 renewal fee, or $20 processing fee. The minimum amount that somebody would pay for an annual tax is $30. And that's from 0 to $24,999. So it wouldn't be free if they're providing a service.
I guess the question is, is if the person is starting a business, they have no idea what their gross is going to be at this point though. So wouldn't it be logical to make it free for the first year?
No, because we ask for that applicant to, to guess essentially.
I understand that, but I mean, it's still, we're paying a guess here.
Well, many, well, well, many businesses start with the minimum, which with the $20 processing fee and the $30 tax is $50 for an annual business license.
Councilmember Lingle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With all of this discussion on veterans, and it seems like there's some concern here, I'm going to go back to tab seven real quickly. We had a slate of possible candidates for the economic development committee. And I'm just doing this because part of the individuals that was on the slate, I'd just like us to pay a little bit of attention to when we, when it comes back for the alternates. The third application here, I think it's the third or fourth application, a guy by the name of Frank Campbell. If you read what he's done, he's, he's involved with employing veterans. That's what his business is, employing veterans. He's been doing this for three years, assisting with veterans to obtain employment. Just recently, this past weekend, we all heard of the Santa Barbara Stand Down, the first ever Santa Barbara Stand Down. Tremendous turnout of needy veterans. So there obviously is a need for this of helping the veterans. Every little thing we can do is important. So maybe we should take a look at this individual Frank Campbell when we're looking at the alternates and possibly get him on our economic development committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So our decision here is that we will amend our license application to, for a blank to, to be marked if someone is a veteran. And then the city attorney will create a short document to aid veterans in calculating their tax and will post the California law within our, what, our website. And you're going to have to come up here, Frank, because you, you don't have to say your name again. Sure.
Making this computation between sales and labor, where in the state law is that, is that specified? And what I'd like to know now, 16102 is an exception in the business license for veterans. Now, does this law that you're talking about, does that apply to veterans too? I'd like to see that in the California state.
No, 16102, Frank, talks about goods, wares, and merchandise. It doesn't talk about labor.
That's exactly right. That's exactly right. It does not.
I, I know, but you're, you're going the wrong direction. 16102 exempts a veteran from paying the tax on goods. It does not exempt him from paying the business license tax on labor.
Where does it say that? That's what I'm asking. What's the California statute that says?
That's what this statute says. You're re, yes, it does.
I only see two restrictions. I see a restriction for, for goods and merchandise and I see a restriction for bars.
Well...
I don't see anything else in there.
I, again, bring the, bring the information from the judge advocate. That would be helpful. We can have the conversation some more.
Oh.
This isn't, this isn't the last time. We're, we're always here. Okay. Any other questions on this subject? Okay. We'll close this subject and we'll go forward to item number nine.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. This item is requesting city council discussion in consideration of a planning commission recommendation to revise the schedule for city council's review process for the 2030 general plan, excuse me, update phase one and phase two, the zoning ordinance and the Old Town specific plan. The recommendation is for the city council to consider the revised schedule proposed by the planning commission and provide direction. The background is provided in your staff report. The meeting held, the joint meeting held by the city council and the planning commission in August of this year, the, there was discussion regarding revision to the general plan update schedule. And the planning commission held discussion at their meeting of September 12th to provide a proactive recommendation to the city council. The commission identified priorities during that meeting. And their priorities are summarized in your staff report. The first priority for the planning commission is for the 2030 general plan update phase one to be heard. The recommendations that were made by the planning commission in October of 2011, they're requesting that the council consider those recommendations and the phase one update be processed. The second phase would then follow. The cost of that work is outlined in your staff report. Those funds have been allocated and are specifically identified in the staff report. Priority two for the planning commission is the comprehensive zoning ordinance update. The commission is recommending that following completion of the general plan update, the council direct that a comprehensive zoning ordinance update be completed. There is a cost associated with that particular action. And there is a recommendation in the staff report that a fee that we currently have established be utilized to accomplish the zoning ordinance update. Priority three to the planning commission is the Old Town specific plan. Council has directed that the planning commission move forward with working on that particular plan. And the planning commission is looking forward to doing that in concert with the economic development commission, committee, I'm sorry, and with the stakeholders in the Old Town. There are additional issues of concern that are identified in the staff report. One is the zoning consistency with Chesapeake, an ongoing issue of concern. And there are suggestions on how that might be handled and resolved by the establishment of an overlay zone in the Old Town or in the South Side. Additionally, the commission acknowledges that the council could direct us to change the zoning to match the general plan designation. There are some options for handling that. Staffing in the planning division is acknowledged by the commission. And there's a discussion of new projects. Fortunately, we are seeing a rise in new projects and that is a very good thing. We have had business items for our past couple of meetings and continue to see them coming And the commission is aware that we want to process all of anything that is going to bring business and is going to develop the community. We want to make sure that those receive prompt attention and are moved forward. And they acknowledge that some of the work that we do with administrative, we don't want that to interfere with the new development projects. There is text of a draft schedule. And additionally, I've been included with the staff report. The, the staff report for September 12th that gave background to the planning commission's discussions. Also, there's a recommendation memo that was provided and signed by Chair Gonzalez on behalf of the planning commission, which is attached to your staff report. And there is the schedule that brings forward the new recommended schedule for the general plan update. And that's attached to your staff report as well. So those are the recommendations from the commission. And I'm available for any questions.
Are there any questions before we have public comment? I think you guys got a flip for it. That was, that was a simultaneous click. Councilmember Costa.
Thank you, Mary Lynn. I'm not going to spend any time saying that I was right because we are going to be past election time and we are not completed with the process that we set out to complete. That said, the election is upon us. And I noticed that part of the scheduling revision, there are some decisions that would take place rather quickly. Now, I do see that you said this could be moved to January. So I would state for council, now that my recommendation would be potentially January or even February, anybody who's newly elected is going to have a lot to learn about these topics and will need to be brought up to speed before these are discussed on the dais. So that would be my concern in that regard. And I would say that the final, I would like to see everything done by October of 2013. And so I know that's just a setting us back an additional two months to allow any newly elected to get up to speed. Thank you.
Councilmember Starbuck.
Just a couple of questions real quick. The priority two, the comprehensive zoning ordinance update, the estimate of 100 to 150, who, who would do this update? Are we looking at RINCON again or is this?
No, we received an estimate from a firm that does specifically zoning ordinances out of San Luis Obispo. We went to a firm that, that this is their specialty.
Did you, I got to real quick interrupt you on this now. Does this firm have answers for inconsistencies with downzoned properties where we've taken value from people? I'll give you, there's several examples, but we could use a, a particular piece on Laurel that I look at. It doesn't meet any of the requirements for the zone it's in. It's, it's totally a devalued worthless piece of property that's now a blighted thing. What would this firm's solution be for that kind of a property?
I think...
This is just a quick question because I'm going to flip the page in a second.
Well, let me, let me, the, what she's talking about is a zoning ordinance. And I think what we're talking about there would be a decision that the council will need to make with regard to a number of downzoned parcels.
Absolutely.
And so that's kind of, they're kind of two separate issues.
Well, the whole thing is, is I'm... Well, the whole thing is, is I'm getting ready to put a vote on when we're going to do this, and I, I'm just very curious about this, because there's certain elements of this that I agree we should adopt, and then there's others that I don't want to touch with a poll right now. Um, the zoning map and the land use element, again, is, is a big concern with the zoning consistency, and this, I, I think before I was, to even think about when I would want to adopt this, I'd really like to know what we're going to do with our zoning, because obviously, we've never been in line with it since at least, what, what's the date on here, seventy something?
Nineteen ninety-seven.
Well, no, go earlier than that.
Okay. Um, are there any other questions before we have public comment? Okay, let's go to public comment. Anybody out there want to talk to us about item number nine? Seeing no one rise, we'll close public comment and come back. Um, I share councilmember Costa's concern. Um, I think a, a January start date would be good. I'm, I'm happy that the planning commission has given us this, I think, a January start date with a, a workshop perhaps to talk about the various issues, so we kind of get all of our issues in a row, rather than having a council meeting. I, that would be what I would really like to do, because I, as you all know, I started out in city government over the exact issue that councilmember Starbuck talked about. That's what drew me in, in two thousand and five, and we haven't fought that one to a conclusion yet. So, um, if I could get three other nods, it would be to have the staff establish a workshop as early in January as practical with the rest of our schedule, so that the new council that's seated, unless they change their mind after they're seated, could have a workshop on the subject.
I would just edit that request to late January, because they actually won't be sworn in until early December. You, are, do you feel comfortable with one month?
Yeah. Okay, I'm fine with that. Let's just say in January that the, that is satisfactory time.
I would agree with that request.
Okay, and I need at least one more nod. I got one, and you want to get a couple more nods in here? Dirk, you want to nod in? Because we're going to start by doing what you want to do. We're going to look at all the issues.
So we're going to try, we're going to try and follow this schedule, where we're going to shift.
We're going to talk about, we're going to talk about how we do it at that workshop, and we're going to work, but I think this is something the planning commission is recommending.
Well, basically, we're, instead, we could move it to December eighteenth, and what we're looking at doing is moving it till the end of January.
Yeah, so we have.
Twenty thirteen.
New time for new people, because there's at least three of us that might not be here.
That's why I want to be real clear on this, then.
Yep, and that workshop will be to discuss all the issues and prioritize them. Okay, everybody good?
Mary Lynn, I, I, I accept that with the idea that I, I want to keep us down this path as suggested. I think that we should make a formal decision tonight to approve this schedule as suggested and, and not change the potential, I think talking, I think a workshop is fine, talking about what the issues are, getting more public input on the, you know, some of the other things we're going to be talking about is fine. But I see this as, um, a step in the right direction, and so I would like to, um, approve this schedule as is. I mean, excuse me, with the edit, of course, that it would be up, um, a month or two.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, but nowhere in here does it talk, that, that I find where it talks about the issue that Dirk and I are talking about, which is the two hundred and fifty residential parcels and the sixty, however many they are, industrial parcels. And I think we need to have that discussion at the very beginning. I'm, I'm good with the rest of the schedule, but I want to make sure that that, that issue is built into it early on.
Steph.
Because it's going to bring a whole bunch of people to meetings otherwise.
Where did you see that fitting in, the process?
It is included in the process as part of a recommendation that came forward from the planning commission, and it was part of looking at the land use element. So that discussion did come, you do have a recommendation for the zoning consistency from the planning commission.
What phase?
Which date is that for?
Phase one. It's in, it's in Phase One.
And which of the five dates in Phase One is that attached to? That's what I didn't find.
It would be in, probably, it's about the third meeting. The first meeting is a workshop to bring the decision makers up to, uh, date on exactly what we are looking at and how we've gotten to where we are in the general plan process. The next meeting would look at, you would start looking at your expansion areas. Once you look at the expansion areas, we move into the land use map, and looking at the land use map, then we're looking at the zoning consistency.
So technically, that's priority two, comprehensive zoning ordinance update. Is that what we're talking about here?
No, it's actually, it's part of.
January twenty-fourth.
The general plan. It comes forward with the general plan recommendation.
The, the thing here that would make me most comfortable would be to take January twenty-fourth and make that the item ahead of the expansion areas. That would, it's the longest simmering issue, and I, would it cause you some great difficulty to bring that, the inconsistencies, to the front end of the, of the party?
No, we can certainly bring it forward. We would, you would want to do that before you have the workshop on the general plan?
No, no, that would be the first action after that.
Okay.
In other words, just move it up two pegs in the, in the, in the scheme of things. That would, that would put me, make me, put me to rest on the subject, because I think all of us have been down this road a long time. Everybody, is everybody good with that?
Wait, city staff, why did you have it in the order in which you did, where you had it at that meeting? Is there a particular reason?
It was the sequencing of how the process proceeded. We did the expansion areas first as part of the land use element, and then we moved on to the mapping issues. The mapping issues for the land use element brought us to the zoning consistency, because there are some changes that our recommendations are made, but there's not many, but there are some changes that we're asking you to make.
So in your, in your mind, that's the, that's the correct sequence of events?
That's correct.
If we did it the other way, would that create any issues?
If you do it before the expansion area, we would, we would want you to look at the land use element. Um, you can do the zoning consistency at a separate meeting.
Here's my concern, Mary Lynn, is, you know, I feel like we've taken it out of sequence before, and I'm just so ready to get it done, that if this is, you know, the most sequential, you know, if this is the way to do it, we should just do it and get it done. That's my idea. Thank you.
Um, whichever one of you is next.
You're taking cuts.
I'm taking cuts, yeah, because I've been quiet on this so far. I'm going to put someone on the spot. Merrick, would you come up for a second? Uh, we have a member of the planning commission here, and I know Lucille has been speaking for them, and I, I'm agreeing, I'm tending to agree with councilmember Costa. We've played around, we talked a little bit earlier about, you know, you feel like, someone mentioned you feel like you're having Groundhog Day or something like that, you know? So, explain to us how, because this was a five oh vote on the planning commission. So we, I can, I can assume you're speaking for the entire planning commission when you, when you talk about your schedule. Would you just tell me your feeling, your discussion at the planning commission meeting about how you came up with this schedule and what your, what your feeling is if we would tweak it a little bit?
Um, I can't really speak to why we came up with the schedule as we did. You know, the, the first phase of the general plan is the most important, and so, um, and then, um, uh, land use and, um, and zoning come after that, and that's why we were, it was put in that order. Um, the, I don't think there would be any problem with you having a discussion about the issues that, that Dirk stated in advance in preparation for it, if you didn't make a decision until, you know, you, you looked at the whole package. So, and the whole package starts with the general plan. And, you know, at the mandate of the state, the general plan comes first, and then once you have a plan, then you can work on the other things. So, um, uh, zoning is one of those things that comes after the general plan's approved, and that's why we continually ask that the general plan be approved, so that we can legitimately work on it and have a plan to fall back on that directs us in our, in our, uh, in our task for, for finding proper zoning. Um, but there are issues related to, to the zoning that you may want to discuss in advance. Um, but I, you know, I would just caution you to first approve the general plan and then move forward from there.
No, we're, we're looking at the zoning map inconsistencies, not zoning zoning.
It, zoning map inconsistencies are zoning.
Okay.
I, I mean, there's a legitimate reason, obviously, why. We, we looked at every single parcel that you're going to be talking about and, and talked about every single parcel. And, you know, you can't just spot zone. You can't take a lot out of a, out of the middle of a block and say, this should be zoned separately from all the other parcels in this block.
Correct.
And so, you know, it's, it, it's difficult, um, um, to make some decisions that were made, but there are laws that regulate, there are standards that regulate, and we took a look at all of those parcels and those laws and those standards, and, and we had a lot of public comment. Uh, you know, we had many meetings on this, and it's still, what, what we have is what you have that came forward. You're probably going to ask a lot of the same questions that we asked, and I think it's probably healthy for you, but, um, you know, I, the, the proper process is to complete Phase One of the general plan, prove that, and then let's move forward.
Okay, thank you. So, question to you, Mr. Mayor. You wanting to move it forward, is it just for discussion, or is it to, for discussion and making decisions? I think it'd be a waste of time to have an entire meeting to discuss something and not make a decision, frankly. Okay. But, you know, if this is such a big thing for everybody, I'm, I'm happy to leave it in this order, if that's, it's that important that we do it in this precise order, just that everyone knows for certain that we will be looking at those issues, because, um, I think my last count was sixteen meetings people would have had to come to and object, and as we all know, they came and objected repeatedly and profusely. So, okay, so I, I, I'll back up a notch. I'll go with councilmember Costa's recommendation that we be in the process in late January. We'll take the things in the order that are on here, and the first effort will be a, a general review and an explanation that will be in a workshop. Everybody good with that?
Okay.
Okay. All right.
Me now.
Oh, I'm sorry. Two next. Who, me?
He cut.
Oh, he cut. Okay, you're in.
Just a quick question, Lucille. With our EIR, are any of these things getting ready to fall off the map on that, or are they going to be due for updates? Any concerns in that that we're not aware of up here?
We become concerned the longer the EIR is not adopted and certified.
Why?
Because standards change. Uh, one issue becomes, say, greenhouse gases. Our addendum was done to meet the standard that was in place. Uh, if something changes, we could be, um, in a bad place.
Are we, are we currently in that position with anything in the EIR?
Well, it, our addendum is getting to the point where we could be challenged on it.
Councilmember Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm ready to make a motion if this council is willing to take one. I would like to move that the staff, uh, the, the council recommends, uh, the staff recommendation that was brought up to the city council on the revised schedule proposed by the planning commission.
A second. Not in just a second. So this is in lieu of what councilmember Martin, or councilmember Costa suggested? I'm confused.
Well, yes, that's exactly what the recommendation is. The staff recommends that the city council considers the revised schedule proposed by the planning commission.
So you're recommending this begin on December, on November twenty-seventh?
Well, with the, with the changes of the new council members coming in January, uh, whether it's at the beginning or the late of January, that's whatever.
Okay, that, that's what I was confused about. So you're, you're moving this recommendation with councilmember Costa's starting date?
Timeline.
Timeline.
Just for the record, there's already been that motion and a second on that.
Okay, well, I think everybody's moving the same thing.
So I'm going to amend my motion.
No, what councilmember Costa already.
Councilmember Costa did not make a motion.
Ah, okay, I thought you did. Okay, so councilmember Martin, you're moving the timeline with the, um, change that the beginning will be at a workshop in the latter part of January, the staff will establish, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and a second.
Second.
Okay. And is there any further discussion? Uh, councilmember Martin, you have further discussion, or, okay. And it could be vote, please. That passes five zero. Thank you. Um, and now we're going to move on to item number ten. A memorandum of understanding with the Santa Barbara County Association of Governments, SB CAG, and contract with STORE Transportation Services for operations of the Clean Air Express commuter bus service.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, you have, uh, three recommendations before you this evening to authorize the mayor to sign an MOU with SB CAG for the city to operate the Clean Air Express service. Second, to waive the competitive bidding requirements of the municipal code as allowed in the municipal code three point three six point one, one, six, zero. And third, authorize the mayor to sign a contract with STORE Transit Systems for the services and operation of Clean Air Express. The background entails, um, the basic, um, operation of the Clean Air Express, which the city operated, uh, during the two thousand nine, ten budget year, uh, before it went to the city of Santa Maria. On August first, SB CAG notified the city that Santa Maria intended to terminate its operation of Clean Air Express and requested that the city, uh, provide a letter of interest and cost proposal by August seventeenth to be the new operator. Given the short response time, uh, provided by SB CAG, uh, city competitive bidding procedures outlined in the municipal code, um, were impractical. Given the impractical time constraints for providing a proposal to SB CAG, staff believes the requirements for waiving the competitive bidding process have been met for the purpose, proposed service contract. The city contacted STORE Transit Systems, which is our current transit provider for Colt, who expressed an interest in providing the service. STORE currently operates, uh, large over-the-road coaches such as Clean Air Express has throughout the western United States, so they do have experience in this kind of service. On August twenty-seventh, staff submitted a draft proposal to SB CAG and has worked with both SB CAG and STORE to finalize the MOU and the service contract. The approval, uh, should council approve both of these tonight, it would go to the SB CAG board on Thursday, with the transfer taking place on, uh, November twenty-second. The attached MOU and the contract, uh, provides some, um, outlines of various specifications such as revenue hour rate, which would be paid to STORE based on only the revenue hours, not on service hours, not on transporting buses back to Long Oak for service or anything else. Uh, it provides for operational costs such as a city administrative fee of eight thousand three hundred and seventy-five dollars per month, uh, which covers all the city costs involved in operating this service. It also provides for a city land lease for the park-and-ride downtown and for lease of the airport property where the buses are currently parked. As far as fiscal impact, there is no negative fiscal impact to the city. All costs are covered by fare revenue and Measure A North County interregional transit funds. Clean Air Express service provides services for approximately two hundred and four thousand passengers a year, and, um, the approval of the MOU between the city and SB CAG and the award of the contract will ensure the continued operation of a needed regional alternative transportation service within the community. service within the community.
So let me just give a teeny bit of background from the SB CAG Board perspective. In, when the contract went out to bid the last time, the city of Santa Maria underbid us and none of us could figure out how they could do it for that. And then they engaged, their contract with SB CAG was based on revenue hours and they engaged in a contract with their supplier based on miles. And they came to the SB CAG subregional, I'm going to say it was July, and basically said, oops, we made a mistake and we've lost $200,000 on this and we want a really big increase. I think it was $118 an hour, if I remember correctly. And the subregional board said, well, you know, we're going to need to go back out and kind of check this out, see what Lompoc would care to do. And then, a little later in the same meeting, the city of Santa Maria said, you know what? Never mind, we don't want to do it anymore. And asked for some money to compensate them for their loss. Ultimately, the board agreed to pay them at a rate equal to what Lompoc would've done it for because they had underbid us. So they were paid the difference between the rate they bid and the rate we bid. And then the next step was the SB CAG Board coming to our staff and asking if, you know, how we, what we would charge to do it, and that's where we are with this. The big difference is when we had, when we had this service before, we were paid on revenue hours and we paid our contractor on revenue hours, so we weren't at risk. Santa Maria, for whatever reason, went a different direction. Again, this time, we're paid on revenue hours and we pay our contractor on revenue hours, so we're not at risk. And then we receive income for the downtown parking lot, which will be very important to us now because we don't have the RDA funds to maintain it. And then we also receive an administrative fee to manage the project. And this was increased this time based on the city administrator's review of the costs and a recommendation for the amount. That's my SB CAG story. Councilmember Lingle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Fernbach, just for anyone else there that's wondering, how can, why Santa Maria was losing money and why we think we can make, not necessarily make money, but we can do it at a no risk? We had this contract prior to Santa Maria. We did just fine.
Right.
Okay. The contract we are now entering into is actually a better contract than we had two years ago.
Correct.
So, I mean, we did it before, we didn't lose any money, we actually had some revenue coming in, now we have more revenue coming in.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Costa?
Thank you, Mary Lynn. That was one of my questions. So the cited reason that Santa Maria wanted to stop providing the service was loss of revenue?
Yes. It's because they, they were paid based on revenue hours, but they were paying their contractor based on mileage. And I don't know why they did that. No one, yeah.
Okay.
That isn't what you'd ever do.
And I would assume that the, the policy board is SB CAG, and so that's actually where the ownership of the buses is, is that correct? Who are, who's?
It's their buses.
And it's their, right, okay, so that's what I wanted to make sure.
Yeah.
Right, and the maintenance would come from the budget that they've?
Right.
That's built into the revenue hours.
Built into the revenue hours.
Built into the revenue hours, okay. And the last question I have is I, I'm assuming I know the answer and it probably doesn't, but is there any way that this affects Fairbox?
No.
Fairbox is not.
It's a separate service and we can't counter toward our Fairbox, otherwise we wouldn't have anything to worry about.
I know, 85% Fairbox, I saw that, that's unbelievable. Darn it, okay.
Yeah. Just take a quick second. Open for oral communication. Anybody want to talk to us about this? Seeing no one rise, we'll close oral communication and we'll come back. Are there any more questions for Mr. Fernbach? You have a question?
No questions, it's going to move for a?
Okeydoke.
I move that we accept staff recommendations or approve staff recommendations.
Add a second.
I'll second.
And is there any further discussion? Seeing none, can we vote, please? That passes five zero, thank you. And we now find ourselves at written communications. Do we have any? None. You promised us we're going to have one written communication before the end of the year. Oral communications, anybody else out there want their last two minutes?
Mayor, City Council, Pam Wall, local resident. I don't, I just have a quick question. Goes back to the zoning. I believe that Councilman Starbuck and Mary Lynn made an inquiry to the state about your status or on recusing yourself from some of these discussions. Has there been an answer?
We do not have an answer yet at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Well, when we get it, you'll be the first to know, if you're sitting here. Absolutely. Now, any response we get, we provide. Anyone else? John, are you standing up to testify or are you running? He's running.
Close the door.
Okay, close oral communications, council requests, comments, and meeting reports. Councilmember Martin?
I'd like to make a comment for the public record. I would like to go in the minutes. I did not participate on one agenda item that was tonight at the closed session. That agenda item was a discussion of the city administrator's job description. I believe that that should have been conducted in a public session. And as such, I left the closed session and did not participate in any discussion regarding that item. So please put it on the public record, I'll appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have anything else to report? Councilmember Costa?
Thank you, Mary Lynn. You know, I had some meetings and such, but I just wanted to highlight really quickly the, again, the fire department event. That was just unbelievable, really, that, I couldn't make it to Coctoberfest, unfortunately, it was my sister's 30th birthday. But we had a good time in the wine ghetto, supported local business, so that was good too. But that, yeah, that event was really fantastic. It was really great collaboration and I was really excited to see that. Two things really quickly. The first thing is, is I've been thinking about this quite often and I think that, you know, we've, he should be at our next meeting. Chamber CEO has been coming and giving us updates on behalf of the chamber. And for me, that's very useful because although we see each other at events, this is a really formal update and we get, you know, sort of a comprehensive update. My one concern is that we don't have enough communication with the school district. So I thought if possible, we could discuss having a representative from the school district come up once a month, once every other month, to give us an update on what's going on with the school district. Part of that, I know, isn't coming upon me to reach out and I do meet with some folks, but just not often enough and it's not in the public. So I thought that that would be very helpful. You know, just kind of, again, making sure we're all communicating, we're all on the same page, we can all help each other and kind of know what's going on. So I'd like to have council consider potentially writing a letter to the school board that would request, you know, a representative either of the board or a staff member to come and give us some updates.
Maybe that could be reciprocal where, you know, they come to us and then we also do our thing and go and report to them.
Sure, yeah, if they would like, I think that that's, that's a perfectly reasonable request, yeah, or offering.
Council comfortable with the city administrator sending a letter out on that subject to talk to them about that? Everybody good? Okay, good.
And then the other thing I wanted to mention is there was an article in the paper that gave some examples of some requests that we've made. And I must admit, I think that the examples given probably weren't the most, weren't the best examples to use because I do know the updates of some of them. But there are still some open-ended requests that I have out, you know, in the black hole of council requests that exist somewhere. And that was the comprehensive homeless services plan that I had suggested when the original Marx House, Bridge House situation took place. And I did that under advisement from the gentleman who runs CASA down in South County. And he had a very good explanation as to why. So I brought that forward and that was supported, but it never came back. So that's just one example. I'm not sure how we want to go about the other examples, but I just wanted to bring that forward and see if the city administrator knew now of anything that would take place or if that's something staff still felt relevant to be discussed, if they saw it happening in the future or whatnot. I was just looking, that's, again, just one example that wasn't included in the article that was still outstanding. Thank you.
City Administrator?
I'd ask council, what is your desire? And I'd also ask for some clarification on what you're expecting.
We have a, yeah, well, maybe you could meet with Councilmember Costa and look at this one particular request.
I just want some direction from at least three of you, that's the policy. Is this an item to come back on the council agenda or is it a memo and?
Look for a memo, right?
I'm now going to go back and look at the tapes because I'm almost 100% sure that was an agenda item request that was approved by three council members. And so the, what I requested should be delineated. And so I would request that you go back and review that meeting and use those details to provide us some additional information. Thank you.
Okay, and do you know the date by any chance?
I believe it was, when did they close? Was it December, January? January of this year, December, January?
It was January.
I think, I mean, I may have the date somewhere.
Oh, I'll do some research and find out what that request was for you.
Thank you.
Okay, good.
So for, for the record, the article was pertaining, Ms. Barcelona, the article pertained agenda items that have been approved by three council members to come up to the agenda. So I don't see why they need to come up for approval again. These are outstanding items that have been submitted by three council members. And the question is when they will come back to the council. It's not a question whether they should, it's when.
So is what, is what you're asking for a list of all the open items or where are you going with this?
I think that that's kind of the sentiment here is, is some update of all the outstanding agenda item requests that have received three votes.
Okay, and I think that's the list that we had at a prior workshop plus any updates.
Yeah, we did that close in of 2011 and that's when you set your priorities for 2012. So I will review and if you'd like to see something similar to that, I would, I would recommend that maybe agendize the second meeting in November.
Okay, sounds good. Councilmember Lingle?
Cutting again. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also, I have to comment on the Fire Department Open House and the Coctoberfest, two great events, well-attended. The Fire Department Open House was very educational, kids all over the place having a great time. The Coctoberfest was also very educational because we had our local police department over there giving breathalyzers, demonstrating breathalyzers to participants. I blew a .02, so I was very proud of that. That's good, yeah. There's another event that I attended that I, I wish more public were watching it right now, but I mentioned it last time. The Home Depot provided a new kitchen for the Veterans Memorial Building. And on one day, they had about 200 volunteers from, Home Depot volunteers from as far south as I believe it was Simi Valley, north to San Luis Obispo, Tascadero, coming and just completely gutting the kitchen, installing new tile, new cabinets. We're going to be getting new appliances in there. They also did a whole bunch of landscaping outside. So they had 200 volunteers inside, outside that building, just doing a wonderful, wonderful job. Home Depot paid for the entire thing and it was a great event. The city also participated in that and they helped with it, so I was very proud of our city as well. I attended some meetings, nothing at, on city expense, so I have nothing to report, but I do have a request. Our council meeting on November 6th, we, at the last meeting, we added several meeting, or several items to it. And I'd like to request that we move one of the items, which is a transit center update, to a future meeting, taking off the meeting for November 6th. And also, I'd like to request that we consider starting the meeting at 6:00 PM instead of 7:00 PM. As you know, that's election night, some of us will either have some beer to cry in or we're going to, there's things we have, we have planned for that evening. So I'd like to try to shorten the meeting a little bit, start it an hour early. So that's my request. I guess I need two other people to agree with that.
Boo hoo.
Is that a yes or a no?
It's a boo hoo. You talk about the transit center, I'm not going to be here.
That's okay.
I'm fine with, but I'm not going to be here.
I'm fine with that. Good with that?
Six.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Six on the sixth? Councilmember Martin?
What? Okay. So we have, we have four votes for that. Councilmember Starbuck?
Well, being the last in line.
I'm last.
Well, anyhow, fire station open house, check. It talked about. Home Depot Vets Building, check. I will say at the Coctoberfest, I blew a 0.00, so I was doing a whole lot better than Mr. Lingle was. And the only thing that hasn't been talked about, and I'm going to steal this from the mayor, is I took a great tour of the Allen Hancock Public Safety Center today. And I have to say, how exciting and I can hardly wait for it to open.
It was great. We got to go out on the high-speed driving track at, what would you say, 20 miles an hour? Give or take, yeah. We didn't get to drive even at 20. But it is coming along nicely there, about 45 days behind and hoping to catch up. You wouldn't know it to look at it, a lot of the buildings are, are, most of the way up. Just to thank all the eighth graders at Parisma Church who worked very hard to put a forum together, had a great time. And I have something no one else had. I have Count Dracula. So this will be the Lompoc Theater presentation, Lompoc Civic Theater presentation at the Civic Auditorium on October 19th, 20th, 26th, and 27th, November 2nd and 3rd at 7:30 PM and a matinee on October 21st and 28th. They were on the TV show with me last week and we had a great time. This is a, how would I say it? A dark comedy, I think is how they described it. Guaranteed to be a little scary and a lot of fun. Tickets are available at Alfie's Fish and Chips, the Chamber of Commerce, and Texas Cattle. Ditto the Hancock Tour and all the other ones. And I didn't travel at city expense for the last two weeks. And Dirk wants me to talk about the Zombie Walk on October 27th. Yes, we'll, we'll, but if you, if you want to be a zombie, your chance is coming up on October 27th.
It's the 31st.
Oh, it's at the 31st? 27th.
27th.
27th. Lompocalypse. And we're going to have them on the TV show this week, so we'll have fun with that, too. Yeah.
That did it?
Yeah. Steve is the head zombie in Lompoc.
Pirates.
Oh, yeah, boy, if I don't announce that, I'll be in a lot of trouble. The Pirates have been working for a month building sets over in my warehouse for the haunted house at the Vets Building. They moved them all down there and they're setting up their sets now. So do not fail to go and have some fun. And the Pirates are raising some money for sports scholarships. So thanks to the Pirates of Lompoc, we were almost as much fun as the Pirates of the Caribbean. Anything else? Okay, we will therefore be adjourned to the Lompoc City Council meeting, to a special meeting at 7:00 PM on October 30th. Thank you all for your time.